I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, October 17th, 2016. I want to welcome everyone. Pastor Eldon Morrison, Shaw Temple AME Design Church at 775 Hurt Road is here tonight to give our invocation and our pledge. So if you'll come forward, glad to have you. And if everyone will please rise.
Make the difficult decisions, the hard choices that will move this city forward. We pray, oh Lord, for those tonight who do not have fine cities to live in, do not live in homes, those who are helpless and hopeless tonight. We pray that through some act of kindness, perhaps through our own hands, through our own hearts, they might be touched with your love. Bless this gathering tonight with your presence and with your peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you so much for coming and giving the invocation. This church is located at the intersection of Hurt and Hicks, if I'm right. It's two churches on that four corners. I've actually went out there several years ago. I don't know what it was for, but it was a good hour and a half I was there. So it was a great... I say that, once you get me in, you ought to hold on to me as long as you can. But thank y'all so much. If you're looking for a new church or want to visit or don't have any affiliation with the church, I'm sure they'd love to have y'all. I think I like y'all very much.
New pastor in town. Thank you. Glad you're here. Welcome.
Item two is agenda changes. We only have one agenda change, and that is item 4D, which is a public hearing, rezoning request for 446 Belmont Circle Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation. Once we get to that, we will table that until 11/21. So that's the only change that we have. So if you're here for that, that will be tabled until 11/21/16. Under the mayoral report, we got a proclamation recognition of Cobb County Diaper Day, October 24th, 2016. Is anyone here to receive that? If you want to come forward, I'm going to ask the council member Andrea Bluestein read that proclamation and go from there. And then we're going to explain a little bit about Diaper Day. Come right here. Keep walking. You're walking. Go to that podium right there. Hang a right, hang a left. You're there.
You know I have no sense of direction, Mayor. You know that.
Andrew, you got the proclamation?
Yeah.
If you'll read that, then we will present that and we'll go from there.
Okay. This is the proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Cobb County Diaper Day. Whereas the Cobb County Diaper Day Committee composed of concerned volunteers was established in 2009, and whereas low-income families face the reality that food stamps do not include hygiene products such as diapers, on average, the cost to buy diapers is approximately $100,000 or more per month. I was like, what? Daycare centers require parents to provide their own diapers. Local nonprofit agencies have daily requests for diapers. However, due to limited supply donations, they can only dispense diapers four to six times a year per client. And whereas low-income families often have to choose between food and diapers, causing stress in the home. And whereas economic conditions require creative measures, the Cobb Diaper Day Committee is committed to asking the business community, concerned citizens, and nonprofit organizations to collect diapers from employees, members, and friends throughout the month of October. And whereas the single act of donating diapers can help hundreds of families in Cobb County, the Cobb Diaper Day Committee requests that the donors bring their diapers on October 24th at 5:00 PM to Glover Park on the Marietta Square. Now, therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2016 as Cobb County Diaper Day, and ask that all citizens of Smyrna and the surrounding area to join in and donate diapers.
I think Chair Nudowich has something to give or...
And we will take them, for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't you get a picture? What happened to the picture? Okay.
I'm Barbara Hickey. I was a military wife for 27 years. We came back to Cobb County, and I was embraced by the community because I wanted to give back. I wrote an... I read an article in Time Magazine about a diaper bank, and I said, wow, I don't know that we need that in Cobb County, but you know, it sounds like a great idea. My daughter picked us up at the airport, my husband and I, and we were driving, and she said, Mom, I was reading this article in Time Magazine about a diaper bank. And that gave me goosebumps. So I called all of my busy friends and said, do you think maybe we could collect diapers? Because... And all of the things you listed in this proclamation is what I said to them, because that's what was in the diaper bank article. So we've been doing it for eight years, Mayor.
And I'll tell you this, we've done the proclamation just until recently did we actually read it in public. I would just sign it and send it to you. And then that's when I found out really about how important it was. And it doesn't sound very attractive. Y'all, here's a proclamation for Diaper Day, you know?
I know.
But it's such a great project that y'all have, and it's unbelievable, the need for that we have for diapers.
Thank you for appreciating that.
Thank y'all so much for doing all you do.
Thank you.
And those are adult mediums, so... No, those are kids.
Those are number threes, very important, number three.
Yeah, yeah.
The large babies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You get them coming and you get them going when you're... Thank you very much. Item 4, land issues, zoning, and annexation, item 2016-376, public hearings, zoning requests, Z16-015, rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the development of a single one, single-family residence, 0.405 acre land lot, 5192495 Adams Drive, Ronald Dixon is the applicant. I think A, B, and C are all tied together. Is that correct? So give us the background on that. I think we had the public hearing, then we had the annexation, then we had the final vote. So if you give us the background, Mr. Jones, we will go from there.
Mayor, I'll ask a member from Community Development to come up and provide the background. Big President, do you have any further questions?
No problem. This is rezoning request 16-015. The applicant is Ronald Dixon. He is the property owner. He is requesting to annex and rezone this property in the city of Smyrna. This request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the September 12th meeting. They made a recommendation of 5 to 0 to approve the request. This property is located at 2495 Adams Drive. It's approximately four tenths of an acre. It's located in Ward 3. There is one existing house on the property, and the applicant is proposing to rezone the property from R20 and Cobb into RAD conditional Smyrna. They are proposing to subdivide the lot, keep the existing home as is, and then build a new home on the front end of the property, which when we get to the site plan, you'll be able to see that a little bit better. In Cobb County, the property has a future land use designation of low-density residential. We will be required to do a land use change to medium-density residential. Cobb County has been notified of the annexation, and they have submitted a letter to the city saying they do not object to the annexation because it is part of an unincorporated island. Here's the proposed site plan. The house on the top of the page is the existing house. The house at the bottom of the page along Pierce Avenue is the proposed home. This lot was originally zoned in 1944. It's one lot. Then in 1950, the property was... Some property was dedicated to the county for the creation of Adams Drive, and at that point, they subdivided the lot into two lots, but that subdivision was never officially recorded with the county. This request would reestablish that line exactly where they had made the request. His new home. The applicant is requesting the following setbacks for the property, a front setback of 25 feet, a street side of 15, interior side of 10, and a rear of 30. Part of our recommendation is for a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Adams Drives for any future improvements that may be necessary in the area. This is the proposed home elevations. It's the picture of the subject property today. The existing house, and then the vacant piece along Pierce Avenue. These are adjacent properties to give you an idea of what the neighborhood looks like. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for two single-family homes with following conditions. They're requesting... We're proposing to put the standard conditions related to stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, and burying of debris. Also related to tree ordinance, the landscape plan, and landscape requirements. All these can be found under Section 12 of 1 of the zoning ordinance. Under the special conditions, we are recommending Development maintain the following front setbacks, a front setback of 35 feet, a side setback of 10, a street side of 15, and a rear of 30. The front setback is different than what I was showing you on the site plan. Staff didn't... Staff felt there wasn't a hardship or any special exception that necessitated the 25-foot front setback variance that they had requested. The next stipulation is the minimum driveway length should be 22 feet, and that's measured from building face to back of sidewalk or curb. The next stipulation is each home should be a minimum of 1,800 square feet. Next stipulation is the minimum allowable lot size should be 7,430 square feet, and that's the lot of the existing home that will remain on site. Next stipulation is the minimum allowable lot width shall be 70 feet. Next, the developer shall install a five-foot sidewalk for the length of development along Pierce Avenue. Next, the final plat for the development shall include a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Adams Drive. Next, the approval of the subject property shall be conditioned upon the site plan submitted. And next, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted and dated 8/12/2016. And finally, the composition of the homes in the residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to brick, stone, shake, hardy plank, stucco. No elevation shall be comprised of 100% hardy plank siding. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Mr. Martin? Thank you, Rusty. One of the things that... This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning the zoning of this property, rezoning of this property? If there's anyone here that would like to make a comment, need to come forward, be sworn in at this time.
Applicant, we need us to swear in too, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. If you're going to speak, you need to...
I don't know if we are for sure, but...
This is Ms. Nudowich's district, anything?
This is. This is one of those that it's... I've only heard positive things about this. The builder is not new to Smyrna, and the homes that he's built have sold well and sold quickly, so that's always good. And they've actually incorporated themselves well into the neighborhood. I always think it's important when you're talking about building a new home in an established neighborhood that you really have to contextualize the home. And is the home going to be in keeping, not identical to and not identical to anything else that's being built necessarily, but is it in keeping with the context of the community? And I think that that is definitely the case for this home.
Anything that y'all would like to add to what Rusty already added? Things are going pretty well. I wouldn't... Let him in.
Hi, I'm Sean Murphy, and I'm here representing the applicant. Just wanted to just again reiterate one part of that, and that is that this property had been subdivided legally more than one time, actually, going back a number of years. And for whatever reason, it's not recorded with the county that way. But in our research, we found three different deeds that referenced that original subdivision. And essentially, the applicant actually owns the property to the left and also across the street, so he kind of surrounds both sides. If anybody would be the one most concerned, and of course, he's in favor of it. And I believe we had somebody here first time for planning and zoning who was in favor. I don't think we have anybody tonight to speak, but we have not heard anything negative about it. And we have asked the neighbors if we can do anything to make them happy.
Any questions?
If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Get the microphone on, right? Okay, I heard him.
And this is not the first time that we've had this similar... We've had several situations similar to this, where you've had a lot that was subdivided, you know, decades ago, and was brought into one lot and is now being basically brought back to how it originally was when the neighborhood was laid out. And I'm always very comfortable with those kinds of lot divisions. And we have three... Scott, let me make sure I do all this correctly, because there's three items on the agenda for this, so that we... It's all... We've got the public hearing for the zoning request, the annexation request, and the final vote. So am I going to make a motion for A or go ahead for B?
We're going to close the public hearing.
Close the hearing, and then go and have the vote on the annexation.
Okay.
This is... Any other comments or questions? We'll close that portion of the public hearing for this request and go to B, which is 2016-389, annexation request, 100% of the owners requesting annexation ordinance 2016-18 of all tract of land lying and being in land lot 51917, District 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, for the total of 0.396 acre tract, parcel number 17051900620, located at 2495 Adams Drive. I'll turn this right over to Ms. Nudowich for that issue.
Yes, sir. At this time, I would like to move to approve the annexation request, 2016-389. This is with 100% of owners requesting annexation ordinance 2016-18 of all tractor parcel of land lying and being in land lot 519, the 17th District, 2nd Section of Cobb County, Georgia, for a total of a 0.396 acre tract, parcel number 17051900620, located at 2495 Adams Drive in Smyrna, Georgia.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve this annexation request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item C under land issues, zoning, and annexation, 2016-390 is the final vote, rezoning request Z16-015, rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the development of one single-family residence at 0.405 acre land lot 519, 2495 Adams Drive, Ronald Dixon. Ms. Nudowich?
Yes, at this time, I would like to approve the rezoning request, Z16-015, rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the development of one single-family residence. It is a 0.405 acres tract land lot 519, 2495 Adams Drive, and the applicant is Ronald Dickinson.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion. Approved 7-0. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. It's always good to chip away at those unincorporated islands, one lot at a time.
Item...
Take more than one lot at a time, if anyone is interested.
Item D, 2016-375, public hearings, zoning requests, Z16-017, rezoning from neighborhood shopping to general commercial conditional for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building, 0.4 acres land lot, 446 Belmont Circle Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation. I'll turn this over to Ms. Susan Wilkinson. This is going to be tabled till the 21st of November. Ms. Wilkinson?
Okay. I would like to call up either Ken Sudrith or Rusty Martin to tell us about this item, please.
I thought we were tabling this.
Well, it looked like he wanted to step up here, so...
He looked like he wanted to step up.
Yeah, he did.
It's up to you. I mean, y'all can table it without the presentation.
No, we don't...
No.
We need to table it or we need to have...
Yeah, if you're going to table it, you just table it. Yeah, you don't...
So we don't discuss?
Start the hearing, yeah.
Okay.
Rusty, you can sit down and then don't act like you want to come up here again.
Okay.
Wilkinson?
At this time, I move to table item D 2016-375, the public hearing for zoning requests, Z16-017, rezoning from neighborhood shopping to general commercial conditional for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot commercial building, 0.4 acres land lot 446 Belmont Circle Yorkshire Real Estate Corporation. Oh, two, we're tabling it to November the 20th, 21st.
Motion second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more. We're missing one vote. There we go. Approved 7-0. I joke with Rusty because I like him. He does a great job, very detailed, and I don't know what people's look like if we want to come up here or not, but he does a good job, so... Item E, under... This is 2016-265, public hearings, zoning requests, Z16-012, rezoning from R15 to R M 15, conditional for the development of 49 townhome units, 3.9 acre land lot, 809, 847 Woodland Terrace and Bell Drive, the Woodbury Group LLC. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The request is for a 49-unit townhome subdivision, which would yield a density of 12.56 units per acre on the 3.9 acres in question. This property was originally brought before the Planning and Zoning Board back in July of this year and was tabled twice before receiving a 4-1 vote to move forward to Mayor and Council. That occurred back on September 12th of 2016. The recommendation for Community Development Department is for approval, and there is pages of zoning stipulations, and I'll allow Community Development to come forward and assist us with presentation.
Before we get to that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this rezoning request? As the record shows, there is none. Now we can turn it over to Mr. Derek Norton, who I'm assuming he's going to get Ken to come up and do his presentation.
Yes, sir. Correct, Mr. Mayor. Turn it over to Ken.
Thank you. This was in the planning staff's hands for probably a grand total of about six months, working out various details that did go to the Planning Commission, continued to work on those details. That's why it had been tabled twice, and ultimately, you have a recommendation in front of you, as previously stated, with a 4-1 vote from the Planning Commission on What I was saying, is that a little bit better? Good. Is that this is coming to you with a recommendation from approval after they did table it twice. The table aspect sometimes is viewed in a negative fashion. In this case, it really wasn't. It was real, really more of trying to fine-tune and get clarification on issues, as well as work through a couple of different topics that we had. It just took that amount of time to do that. Let me state upfront that the conditions that have already been referenced by Mike being pages, if indeed you adopt those conditions, the total number of townhomes would actually end up being 48 and not 49. And I'll show you how that works as we get through this. The majority of the units that we're talking about are actually going to be off of what we call the Bell Drive side of the property, but there is a pod that is off of Woodland, and both of these are shown on the screen above. This shows the future lane use plan. The issue here is that this particular section allows this type of development, so it's never been a use issue in our discussion. It has always been a density discussion. The development allows developments actually above six units an acre, but there is no cap. And so this request actually becomes important to try to establish what adjacent properties may indeed be like in the future. As already referenced, we're talking somewhere in the range of about 12 units to the acre, give or take with that. So that's the kind of density we are talking about here. Again, this is that urban residential, which says development greater than six units per acre would be acceptable. The development in the back is actually a medium-density residential with aft and downs, and the densities are highlighted there. This is the proposed site plan. You can see in the upper right-hand corner is what is called Pod A. They have 12 units that are proposed there, and then Pod B exists between Bell Drive and Woodland Terrace. So you're going to have half of that Pod B facing Bell and the other half facing Woodland Terrace. The would-be interconnection between Woodland Terrace and Bell Drive through a sort of a zigzag through the development, through a private drive, private alleyway system. A little more detail about the Pod A is that built into this request, a variance request for setbacks, it would be front of 15, side of 10, then a rear of 40. On Pod B, you have a front of 15. On the north side, you would have a 20-foot variance, and on the south side, you'd have a 10-foot variance. So if you approve this request, you also are approving those setbacks. There is open space and amenities in the area, as well as a detention. They are highlighted in green. Excuse me. I referenced the private street, driveway, alley aspect. This is highlighted in red to show you what's going on. There are guest parking spaces, which staff had requested. There are parallel spaces off of... Thank you, Heather. There are parallel spaces that would be in addition to the existing roadway on Bell Drive. These spaces would not take additional space on the width of that drive. This would be in addition to that. So... So there is a dedication that comes along with this from the applicant. So the other spaces you see in blue are internal, and those would have to be close to the kiosk, next to the mail kiosk, which is now a requirement of the US Post Office. Sort of implicit within this type of development, because these units are rear-loaded units and they're pushed to the street, that kind of design is automatically going to create a greater impervious surface area. And in this case, it goes from 50% to 80%. Staff is indeed supportive of that. We feel that is an appropriate trade-off to have rear-loaded units as proposed now. But there are two other requests. There's a building separation request that would occur between units, the unit building nineteen through twenty-five, and then twenty-six through thirty-one. That separation is indeed supposed to be thirty feet. They are requesting ten. Staff is not supportive of that. The ordinance also restricts the number of allowable units in one particular run or building to six. They are asking for seven, and actually, that request for seven units actually exists in two places. One is on this area, the nineteen through twenty-five, but it also exists in Pod A, Unit Six Through Twelve. Staff is not supportive of that when we took that to the Planning Commission. Now, after that, the applicant asked us to reconsider that with regard to Pod A and the easement that exists there, and upon looking at that a little bit more, it became clear that seven units would work only because of that easement precludes that building from actually being split. So staff would indeed support seven units being there, but we do not support the seven-unit section that is in Pod B. These are renderings from the street of Bell Drive on the rear-entry townhome. Again, these units are pulled to the street. These are just another. This is the proposed rear-entry townhome elevations, showing you what they look like. And then this is the view from Woodland Terrace on the front-entry townhomes that exist there. The Woodland Terrace section in Pod A are, because of the size of that, having them rear-loaded was not feasible, also given that power easement was there. So these are actually front-entry townhomes for Pod A, and then again, just a little more detail. Pictures of the subject property. You actually, if you're familiar with Bell Drive, you've got single-family homes as you enter that neighborhood. There's actually ten lots on the east side and ten lots on the west side before you get really into aft and down. This development is on the east side. It does, and actually, I believe it takes the first five lots for development. The developer actually has some additional lots on that side. He does not have them all at this moment. That's why that has not been included in this request. But we may indeed, if this is successful, see future development, not only on the east side with those remaining single-family lots wanting to be converted, but also on the west side, because there's ten lots that match the east side that exist on the west side. Again, these are photos of the adjacent properties. And then, street views of Bell Drive, as well as Woodland Terrace. Now, staff recommendation, as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation, was indeed for approval from R-15 to RM-15 conditional. Again, the standard conditions apply there, dealing with the composition of the home and the open space requirements, the stormwater management, all the standard stuff that is required on every zoning. But there are special conditions that deal directly with this particular request, and they're broken out. I did go through these with Pod A and Pod B on the setbacks. But in addition, each townhome is limited no more to the six-unit runs, with the exception of that development, Unit Six Through Twelve in Pod A. So again, we would allow them to have that extra unit. To make this sort of simple, they were asking for forty-nine. The conditions that staff originally proposed was forty-seven. Now, it would be forty-eight with this, one additional unit allowed in Pod A. Just as Rusty had mentioned previously, in the earlier request, the minimum driveway length is twenty-two feet. Because these are townhomes, a fire sprinkler system is required, and it must be approved by the city marshal. Again, as mentioned, there are right-of-way dedications that need to be made, which are addressed there, as well as sidewalks and landscape buffers. Now, one of the issues that we had to work on during the review period that we had, had to do with stormwater. And so the conditions that deal with stormwater have been written so that they indeed address all of these concerns. So that known stormwater facility or portion thereof shall be located on any portions of the proposed lots. The stormwater management facility shall be located on the HOA's property. Trees shall be planted along the entire length of Bell Drive and Woodland Terrace at an average spacing of no more than forty feet. All trees within the limits of disturbance and not located within tree protection must be removed during the land clearing and grading. The developer will require to install the sanitary main in both Bell Drive, as well as Woodland Terrace, to serve all the lots. Developer shall widen Woodland Terrace to twenty-six feet for the length of development. Let me, what that means is twenty-six feet is what the entire road, he would be responsible for half of that, meaning thirteen feet. So whatever he needs to do to get his side up to thirteen feet is what's required. Then again, we've got approval of the subject property shall be conditioned upon the plans that have been submitted to us, that they are in substantial compliance with those plans, as well as the elevations have to be in substantial compliance with what I showed That there were additional stipulations that they submitted with their application that we are okay with. If there is some discrepancy, then between ours and theirs, then staff's stipulations apply on that. Channel protection shall be required, distards into an MS-4 maintained system, and it cannot be considered for relief from this design. Again, that's one of those drainage issues I had referenced that we worked on. The detention facility shall be designed to delay the peak flow sufficiently to allow the downstream system to develop adequate capacity. The detention facility shall not be located under the private streets. If required volumes cannot be achieved within the proposed footprint, then extending reinforced concrete pipes under the streets may be considered at the city engineer's discretion. That's sort of a lot of fancy words, but the issue about having reinforced concrete pipes as opposed to a corrugated metal pipe is a major design issue and cost issue on that end. That's why we are saying that it cannot be located on the private streets. If it has to be, then it needs to be a concrete reinforced pipe. Developers shall provide unrestricted vehicular access from Woodland Terrace to Bell Drive. The use of gates, signs, et cetera, to restrict access from Woodland Drive to Bell Drive shall be prohibited. And that's the last condition. That last condition was discussed and has been recently added. So the bottom line here is you're taking single-family lots that, according to our existing lane use plan, anticipates a conversion into attached housing of some type of greater than six units an acre. That's the plan that you have in front of us, or that they have in front of us. The density is somewhere in that twelve-units-an-acre kind of range, which we deem as an acceptable future density to go forward, and as long as all these conditions are met, we think we will have an excellent product there. And again, staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of this request. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. That last stipulation, and part of this might be, maybe needs to be addressed by Scott, but the last stipulation where it says the developer shall provide unrestricted vehicular access from Woodland Terrace to Bell Drive, once all the homes are sold and the developer is no longer involved, I mean, I'm wondering if that should also say the HOA should provide that, or, I'm not sure. So if you could clarify that. Thank you.
Happy to. I understand your point. And maybe the better word instead of developer is the development, that the development itself cannot preclude access between the two streets in any way, shape, or form.
So Scott, can you comment on that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, his solution is fine. Yeah, we can ask Garvis too, when he comes up, but the intent is for that to have, there to be unrestricted access through the development, right?
Correct.
So yeah, we can word that, so that happens.
Any other questions? I know that the applicant is here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
He should come forward, if that's okay with Mr. Norton.
Thank you. First of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, Mr. Cochran, Mr. Jones. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I represent the Woodbury Group LLC, also represent Treton Homes in connection with this application. They're working together with respect to Pods A and Pod B respectively. And I have Mr. David of Woodbury, and Mr. Todd Prinky, both of Woodbury Group here tonight to assist me with, to respond to any questions that you may have. This is an application that first appeared before the Planning and Zoning Board a couple of months ago, and there was some opposition to it at that time. What we've done is taken it upon ourselves to make sure that the answers in questions and issues which were raised, or rather, the questions and issues which were raised have been answered and resolved. We think to the residents, most specifically in the subdivision of aft and downs, has been addressed and resolved. It's to our benefit to do that in view of the fact that your ward councilperson resides there, and would love to live among neighbors that perhaps would be pleased with the action he may or may not take. But we did appear before the Planning Commission most recently, where this was heard and considered, and has been recommended for you, consistent with your Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, with staff's recommendation as well. The property, I think, Mr. Sudrith mentioned this, in fact, he pretty much preemptes most applicants' presentations with his comprehensive presentation, and there's no complaint there. But it's a 3.9 acre tract, if you take it all together on the eastern side of Bell and the western side of Woodland Terrace. The city's future development plan shows urban residential, as Mr. Sudrith has said, which allows, establishes densities of six units per acre and above. If you take the blended density of the various phases of aft and downs, they're just in between ten and eleven units per acre. This proposal is approximately 12.56 units per acre. The letter of December 11th, which we have agreed upon most recently, is not the stipulation letter back in July, but it's a letter where we agreed to reduce our request from forty-nine lots to forty-eight lots. And as Mr. Sudrith has said, that primarily devolves upon the hardship we showed with respect to the pod, which has the easement which traverses it. We were able to show a hardship thus giving you, we think, the legislative authority to grant a concurrent variance that would allow that. So it effectively reduces it from forty-nine to forty-eight lots. As I said, Mr. Woodbury and his group will develop Pod A, Treton Homes will develop Pod B. We've received a number of letters, I think you have been copied on them, from residents in Bell Drive, and initially, I think, before everyone really understood what our goal was, not only with respect to this project, but with the future of Bell and Woodland Terrace, I've shown an overall master plan to Mr. Sudrith and Mr. Martin. I think he shared it with the Planning and Zoning Board members in private, with you in private, in a work session, and there's no disingenuity here. We just simply didn't want to parade a plan around that showed people's properties on it, where we hadn't purchased the properties yet, although we planned to do those, and some of those are, in fact, under contract. A lot of the folks that were here in opposition, and I guess there was seven to eight of them, had well-intentioned questions, well-intentioned issues, but a lot of them devolved upon traffic considerations. And the intersection of Bell Drive with Spring Road, even though it is actually controlled by the county, is controlled by virtue of the input that is received from Mr. Randall or whoever your city engineer is at the time, with respect to the synchronization of that signalization at that point on Spring and up and down Spring, in order to address AMP and peak hours. So we think that is under control, and I think your city engineer would concur with that as well. If you saw the master plan, you can see it's a well-conceptualized master plan, and I will tell you this, that in addition to what you have before you tonight, and in addition to what's shown on the master plan, there happens to be a multifamily development in the area that we are certainly looking at and conversations about, and hopefully, you're going to see revitalizations, may not be the best word, but a new beginning, and not just within the halo of what the Braves are doing down at Spring and Cobb Parkway, but for the entirety of the Spring Road quarter, going all the way back to the city. So we do have the stipulations that we've agreed to, those that staff have imposed. We've been revising those up until the last minute, which I guess was Friday, when Mr. Roth, no, Mr. Roth, that'd be Rusty Roth, the city mayor, and this Rusty, it was Rusty Martin, stated that it was the city's desire and the staff's desire to be able to preclude a gated, you know, exclusive gated community that would preclude public access and/or safety and school bus access through the development from Woodland Terrace to Bell. So we've agreed to that as a condition. It may look like it's staff-imposed, but we acquiesce to that, so there's no question about that at all. Even with the operational improvements on Spring Road, and by the way, it's impressive to see your engineering plans on that, and impressive to watch the engineering design that you have on Wendy Hill as well. These are not only gateways to the city, but these are incredibly important traffic corridors that serve your city in the residential rooftops, as well as the businesses as well. But at the end of the day, or in the final analysis, all the levels of service at the respective intersections relative to the proposal by Woodbury and Treton remain the same in either a build or a non-build situation. Now, hydrology's been a huge issue here, and it's not an issue that huge because there's pushback from us or pushback from the city. It just so happens that some of the downstream infrastructure, even in a no-build situation, is not set to accommodate all the circumstances without significant over-detection on our part. So that is going to be kind of an ongoing product or issue in the plan review process, and subject to tweaking as the engineering gets more finite as we go through the process. We're utilizing Mr. Kelly Davis, an engineer with Gaskins, and of course, Eric Randall has been working hand and glove with him, even up to the latter part of last week. So. So as you know, we submitted the stipulation letter on September the 21st. We are agreeable to those. We are agreeable to all the staff stipulations and conditions. For the homes themselves, these are very fine town, town homes. They'll, they'll range in price points from the 360s to the 450s and maybe up considering the, the upgrades that Treighton and Woodbury are known for you. As your community development staff has stated in its recommendation, it, it approves the density. It's always been a density-driven issue, not that we're seeking aggressively to increase the density. It's just that a couple of variances we asked for bore on density-related issues. We think with the variance that staff is now in support of, and we think for good reason because we show hardship, and after all, that's what variances are about, we think that the city and, and Woodbury and Treighton are in a good position. So with there being no opposition, but not wanting to cut short any consideration or questions you have, we do respectfully request you follow your staff and your planning and zoning board's recommendation, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Norton.
Any questions?
So I just want to clarify, you, did you say that it will also be open for school buses in that private drive there from Woodland to Bell?
Sanitation vehicles, school buses, public safety.
Yeah, fire trucks and stuff like that.
The, the streets, streets have to be designed. Deputy Chief Tim Grubah gave us some very specific definitive information on how those streets need to be designed, so they will be.
Okay, and they will accommodate a fire truck in that?
Yeah, they'll be able to fight fires from, from both sides of these units.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And just a quick question. Garvis, you didn't have an issue with the definition there at the end in the sense saying development instead of developer in the sense of?
No, sir, not at all.
I didn't think you would. I just wanted to make sure that's clear. So if we made that change?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's fine.
Anyone else have a comment, question? Okay, thank you, Garvis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Norton.
Well, thank you. This, this has been a, a long process for this development. I remember hearing chatter about the fact that somebody was buying up those homes on, on the east side of Bell Drive and what was going to happen. And so I reached out, found out that David Woodbury was the one doing that, talked with him from the get-go. I, I want to tell you that he has been very cooperative with the city, worked with the staff, been in constant communication with me. That's been over a year ago, I think now. So this, this has been thoroughly vetted. The staff has spent countless hours on it. They've been agreeable to all of the, the stipulations and changes that we have, that we have asked for. I think the product is going to be fantastic. I think Treighton is a, a great builder to come on and do that on Bell Drive. The one thing that I made sure of from the get-go, that, that there would be access from Bell Drive over to Woodland. My friends at Galleria Manor, I promised them that if any development went in there, would give them access to a light. Right now, they can only turn left from Woodland Terrace onto Spring Road, and I don't, I think there's a meeting going in there with the new construction, so they won't even have that. So without that, it was a no-go for me. I've done several meetings with residents as, as recently as last week. We had 50 Afton Downs residents. Not one person was in opposition to this that attended that meeting. I've had three other meetings in Ward One and gotten response, and it's all been positive. I remember the, when our first conversation with Mr. Woodbury, I said, "What's the price point?" And he said, "Oh, probably high ones, low twos." And I said, "You're not, you're not thinking big enough." And I'm, I'm pleased with what we've, what we've come up with here. I think with all of the activity going on in that area, small ranch houses on big lots is probably not, not going to be what's going to be there for long. So I'm pleased with this, and at this point, if there's no other comment, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4E, 2016-265 zoning request, Z16-012, rezoning from R15 to RM15 conditional for the development of 49 town home units, 3.9 acres, landlots 809 and 847, Woodland Terrace and Bell Drive, the Woodbury Group LLC, with the special conditions and stipulations outlined by our staff.
Have a motion second to approve this zoning request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Thank you very much. Item F, 2016-414, approval of subdivision plat for 3621 Ridge Road, 1.1 acres, landlot 698, 3621 Ridge Road, Magnolia Homes of Georgia. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this is a procedural requirement for the subdivision of land. The owners request an approval to subdivide their property into two single-family residential lots. The property will not require a zoning district change, it will remain R20, so no rezoning would be required. The current property is 1.1 acres, and after the subdivision, both lots will exceed one-half acre. There is, staff has reviewed this and recommend approval.
Mr. Cochran, is this a public hearing portion?
Uh-uh, yes.
Okay. This is in Mr. Doug Stoner's district. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that likes to make any public comment, either for or against this change in this, at this, at this location? The record show there is none. Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, we don't have anyone that has any interest in commenting. I think we need to close the public hearing and move on to approval.
That's what?
Yes, I was going to say, are we done with that? Okay, just want to make sure. Well, let's do this then. Let's go ahead and make, I'll make a motion to approve 2016-414, approval of subdivision plat for 3621 Ridge Road, 1.1 acres, landlot 698, at 3621 Ridge Road, Magnolia Homes of Georgia.
Second.
Motion second to approve this, this request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item five is previous licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business, A 2016-429, approval of consulting contract for Jacobs to conduct an update to the comprehensive plan in the amount of $124,780.65 in accordance with the Georgia Standards of Procedures for Local Comprehensive Planning. Mr. Jones, could you give a look more clarification as to who Jacobs is?
Yes, sir. Jacobs is, is an engineering firm, a worldwide engineering firm, very large firm. The, the staff put together a selection committee and put this out on the street, and we received five proposals back, and the proposals were evaluated based on the content of their proposal and their approach, as well as the, after the selection was made, the price was, was exposed for each one of these. Jacobs, for clarification, was not the lowest bid. There was actually the second lowest bid, but produced the product during their, their proposal, which is more in line with what the city was looking for. They are team with Market Street, and the price on that was $124,780.65, and the, and the committee, the selection committee is recommending Jacobs for that project.
This would fall under, Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I can, Ken, if you can just come up a second. And I think just to make clear to everyone, the reason we're doing this, what we're required to do under state law, real quickly, in the sense of why we're spending this money.
Yes, the state requires that we have not only a comprehensive plan, but that it be updated a minimum of every 10 years. We have hit that 10-year timeframe. During the past 10 years, there were also some adjustments made at the state level so that all of the jurisdictions, including Cobb County, within Cobb County, are due October of next year. And so each community is doing their own thing, and it's time for us to, to begin this process. We had talked about this not only back in February in our retreat, we'd also talked about it during our budget cycle. And one other thing I want to mention about the bid, this bid is actually below what was budgeted for on that, so that's another benefit for picking Jacobs as well. But this is a stat, a mandated state update, but this time, because of the other plans that we have in place, the Georgia Tech Study, the Spring Road LCI Plan, and the South Cobb Plan as well, all of those will be rolled into this. We will have a, a much more, a beefier plan, say, than just checking boxes to meet state requirements, which I think we are ready to, to take that kind of approach with our comprehensive plan. And this is the fourth plan that we had talked about. This is the last one, and so we're ready to go, and, and we're excited that, to move forward, and that Jacobs got this bid. We were very impressed at the committee level with them.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it very much. And as you said, yes, this is something that is obviously required by the state every 10 years for us to do the update, and I'm very happy with who we've chosen, along with the, their partner, Market Street, who's very familiar with us. So at this time, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I'm sorry. Ken or Mikey, the one, do y'all remember the, the breakdown of, of how much of this that Market Street was going to do, or percentage-wise versus Jacobs, or was that discussed?
The percent, Market Street is an advisor to, to the team on this, but obviously, they are there because of the vision aspect. And so one of the things that we put a fair amount of weight on was the knitting together of the vision plan that's already in place with the comprehensive plan. Some groups that made those presentations did not do a very good job of, of doing that. And obviously, other groups did, and in this particular case, because they had partnered with Market Street, that, there was a lot of discussion to make sure that plan and the citizens' involvement would, would continue forward and be blended in that. So it wasn't really a percentage thing, Corky. It was one of making sure that, that vision aspect doesn't get dropped.
You hit on the key to my question, so thank you.
All right.
Thanks, sir. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that, for approval of 2016-429, approval of consulting contract with Jacobs to conduct an update to the comprehensive plan in the amount of $124,780.65, in accordance with the Georgia Standards of Procedures for Local Comprehensive Planning.
Second.
Motion second to approve this. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item B, under formal business, 2016-406, approval of appointment of Ward Five Representative Maggie McGarrett to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, this term expires December 16. Mr. Wilkinson.
At this time, I would like to move to approve item, what, six, is it 6B? Sorry. 2016-406, approval of appointment of Ward Five Representative Maggie McGarrett to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, and this term is to expire December 2016. And the reason it's so soon is because there was another person that was serving on this board that resigned, and this is just the, when the term ends, and then it'll be time to reappoint in January. Thank you.
We got a motion?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item C, 2016-407, appointment of Ward Seven Representative Eric Dennis to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, this term expires December 2017. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd originally appointed Margie Quiarto, but she chose to serve on the tree board, which is a less time-consuming task. It's been a challenge. I went through seven additional folks. But Eric Dennis has been a volunteer and a participant with the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board and on Ann Kirk's recommendation, although he lives in the old, one of the old vestiges of Ward Seven. His recommendation is going to be followed, and I move approval of 2016-407, appointment of Ward Seven Representative Eric Dennis to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, and the term is to expire 12/17, December 17.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board is 100%. That's good. Thank y'all very much. Item D, 2016-426, authorization to renew and extend the cell tower lease agreement between the City of Smyrna and SBA Network Services LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents. Mr. Jones, the background.
Mayor, this is the cell tower that's located at 2270 Benson Pool Road. It's at Chuck Camp Park. This agreement was sent to GMA and the city attorney for some negotiation. When it came back, SBA has agreed to pay the city of Smyrna a $30,000 signing bonus for the, the extension of the lease, and in addition to that, we receive a 4% increase in the base rent, and that will go up every four years. We will also receive 100% of any rent from companies that co-locate on this tower. The current lease was scheduled to expire on May 17th of 2019, and this lease extension will be for four additional five-year terms.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Finally, we make some money. That's great. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2016-426, authorization to renew and extend the cell tower lease agreement between the City of Smyrna and the SBA Network Service, Services LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents, with much thanks to GMA.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, would you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, sir. We have six items for your consideration. Item A is the approval of committee of the whole meeting minutes for Thursday, September 29th. Item B is approval of the mayor and council pre-council meeting minutes for October 3rd. Item C is approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes for October 3rd. Item D is an authorization to renew the franchise agreement with Greystone Power and authorize the mayor to sign the related documents. Item E is approval of a road closure on Friday, November 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's from West Spring Street to Village Green Traffic Circle and from Village Walk Bank Street to King Street. This is for the Veterans Day Ceremony, which will take place at the Veteran Memorial Plaza with the seating on Bank Street from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30. And finally, an authorization for Atkins Park Tavern and Restaurant to open or to operate a beer trailer at the Fall Jonkle Festival, October 22nd and 23rd. That's this weekend.
Motion to approve the consent.
New approval.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 7-0. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out for our Ward One, Two, and Three meeting on October 5th. We had great discussion on a variety of topics. I really appreciate those who, who came out. I think we had over 80, 80 citizens there, so thank you for your participation. Also want to say thank you to Vinings Point, Afton Downs, and Spring Hill neighborhoods for having me last week to do updates. I want to remind everybody, this Wednesday, the 19th, Falling Waters Neighborhood Meeting at Fire Station Number Three at 7:00 o'clock. If you've missed any of the other meetings in your neighborhood and want to attend, please feel free to do so. And also, I'm having a meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, the 20th, at Argyle Estates, 3192 Anne Road. That's at the Becker Residence. With that, I yield.
It's Andrew Bluestein.
Yes, I wanted to just remind everyone that Diaper Day is going to be, now that I know how expensive diapers are, October 24th, and they will be accepting donations at 5:00 p.m. at Glover Park in Marietta, if you want to donate some diapers to this very worthy cause. Also, too, I wanted to clarify, when we had our Ward One, Two, Three meeting the other night, the Spring Road meeting for that portion of it will be November 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 and at Cumberland. Cumberland Community Church, so if you are planning on attending, it will be on that date. With that, I yield. With that, I yield.
Ms. Chair Nellowich.
Yes, I also want to echo everyone to donate to Diaper Day. And I think that if you can't make it to Glover Park at 5:00 p.m. on the 24th, there are plenty of locations throughout Cobb County where donations can be accepted. And I would guess that if you Google Cobb County Diaper Day 2016, you will find out where all of those locations are. I'm not sure where they are off the top of my head, but, but that is, it's a really important thing, and it really is a make or break issue. If you're a family that is on, on the brink, being able to have diapers is oftentimes the only way you can get your child to be accepted into a daycare, and that's the only way you can work. And so it really is a critical need here in Cobb County, even in Cobb County. I also wanted to remind everyone that early voting in the past for the presidential elections, we've had early voting at the Community Center. It's been very, at the Smyrna Community Center, it's been very convenient. And this year, that has changed. The Cobb Board of Elections is hosting early voting at several locations throughout Cobb County, but the one that's closest to us is actually at the Wendy Hill Community Center. That is the community center that is near the intersection of Roswell Street and Wendy Hill Road, right by, basically across Wendy Hill Road from the golf courses. And early voting is going to be there. That is going to be the polling place. We're going to have that posted on signs around the community center, just because I think people are creatures of habit and will probably be going to the community center expecting to vote. So it is going to be at the Wendy Hill Community Center, and that's the community center. It is a little bit off the beaten path. You don't really see it when you're driving down Wendy Hill. It was actually closed for several years. The county closed it during the recession. They reopened it recently. So I do urge you to go ahead and vote early. You never know what can happen. And, you know, you might get sick, you might have a sick kid. So just go ahead and vote now while you're thinking about it. And that is, the only other thing I have left is just a very brief update on the vision process. All of the work groups and the Implementation Executive Committee are working steadily to achieve the goals that have been set out for these first couple of years of implementation. So I know you've seen a lot and heard a lot from the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Committee. There's going to be a lot from different groups at the Jonquil Festival coming up this weekend. And I hope that if you do want to get involved, you'll reach out to me or anyone else in the council, and we will put you in contact with the right people. With that, I yield.
Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, I want to thank the residents of Bennett Woods for inviting my wife and I out this weekend to the, I believe, the 9th Annual Chili Cook-Off. I'm still trying to get over it, but it was a great event, and it had a good crowd, it turned out. Congratulations to Kyle Harmon on winning the, winning the first prize Chili Cook-Off of the weekend. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, to let everyone know, or remind people that already know about the, the City of Smyrna and Cory Engineering is holding Public Information Open House tomorrow night, and this is for the corridor development study of South Cobb Drive, and it's the areas from Concord Road to Wendy Hill Road. And it's a South Cobb Drive Development Study. And it's at the Wolf Center, the Wolf Adult Recreation Center, October 18th from 5:00 to 7:00, and that is at 884 Church Street. And the purpose of the open house is to afford the public an opportunity to ask questions and provide input during the early development stages of the corridor development study. So I hope everyone tries to make it there that is interested in that area of South Cobb Drive. I also think they're going to have a booth at the Jonquil Festival this weekend, as well as the Spring Road Corridor Study. So that is, would provide you another opportunity to look at those, the, you know, the, the plans and give input. Also, I wanted to let people know about the Casper's Friendly Castle that will take place Friday, October the 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and it will be at the Smyrna Community Center. And the resident fee is $10 per family, and the non-resident fee is $20 per family. And you can register online or call 770-431-2842. There will be inflatables, carnival games, hayrides, storytime, crafts, and a costume parade. The event is open to all preschoolers, and more info can be found on the Smyrna website. With that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to thank the Forest Hills Preservation Group for their Fall Festival this past Sunday that they do every year. Unfortunately, I was out of town and was not able to be a celebrity dog show judge this year, but once again, appreciate it. They do a great job, and they had a gorgeous day yesterday to do that. Beyond that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else to report, and I yield.
Mr. Ron Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no finance report, but I have a couple items to mention. Before we gather here again next, Halloween will occur on the 31st of the month. It's a time in public safety that we try to pay extra attention, and our public safety assets have been terrific the last couple of years, getting out in the community and helping to slow down traffic and to police the neighborhoods in order to grant our young people a chance to patrol their neighborhoods on a candy search. And so if you see those public safety folks, thank them for what they're doing. Also, the next Smyrna Business Association lunch is on November 3rd. I mentioned it, I mentioned it because the special guest is Kenny Burtz. Any of you who've been around Smyrna for a number of years know about Kenny's great pies as a small business owner and operator who started in his kitchen and graduated to Belmont, kept expanding, now has a business that's located in his dedicated building down on Highlands Parkway in Ward 7. We're proud of his success, and he's going to tell how he got where he is and how to cope with the downturn in the economy. I think a lot of small businesses are eager to hear what he has to offer. And then finally, don't forget on the Sunday before we come to the next council meeting on November 6th, daylight saving time. So the time change is also going to force us to be a little bit more alert in the mornings and in the evenings on young people out waiting for school buses or walking, hiking, biking, et cetera. So please keep that in mind. Be safe out there. And I hope to see everybody this weekend at the Jonquil Festival. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Jones, anything else?
Mayor, I'll, only thing I would add is we had the spooktacular race this weekend, and I'll just let the residents know that I did, I did hear what you had to say. I received a lot of, we'll call them suggestions, on how we can improve, and we took that seriously. And led by Councilwoman Nellowich, she was emailing me over the weekend. We will put together an internal team to go back and take a look at those policies on how we organize and operate and respond to these requests for the road races. We all recognize they're a part of living here in Smyrna, and we enjoy them, but maybe there's a better way to execute them. That's it, Mayor.
Scott Cockburn, city attorney. Terry Graham, mayor. City clerk. You sure? Okay. We do not have a show, show call hearing tonight. Citizens input, no one signed up. So I'm going to clear this meeting adjourned at 8:18.